Good afternoon, I'll call the meeting to order if I could, I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through you worship, first add more order of business is a moment of silent reflection.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item two is declarations of pecuniary interest, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes and there is a motion that the minutes of the special meeting dated April nineteenth and the regular meeting dated April twenty-sixth be adopted as printed.
Moved by Council Gaffney and seconded by Council Henderson, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item four is adoption of the addendum and there was an addendum that was circulated prior to today's meeting. And that is to add to delegation requests and additional correspondence to item five point one on the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee meeting agenda. And there is a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated May tenth be adopted.
Council Bunting and Council Burbak, thank you, moving in second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item five is report of the committee of the whole and camera session item five point one at the May tenth session held just before this meeting. Matters concerning the following items were considered, the first, first two relating to proposed or impending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality and the third relating to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. And at the meeting direction was given on all three items.
Thank you.
Moving to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there was none scheduled. Item seven is orders of the day and item seven point one is a resolution regarding the cancellation of a tender for the Argyle McKenzie reconstruction. And there is a staff recommendation that the report entitled cancellation of T twenty twenty-one dash oh eight Argyle McKenzie reconstruction be received for information.
By Council BD, seconded by Council Vazalacos, discussion. Council Gaffney.
Thank you your worship through you. That's quite, quite a substantial sticker shock of a difference between our estimate and what it actually ended up being. Ended up submitting, I just wonder if there might be some more substantive explanation on on what may be the issue between two point two million and four point one million.
Mr. Pinkler.
Sure again, so that through the mayor. The two main components that I think is resulting from this higher than intended bid price is the current situation and I think that's the biggest factor, as noted in the report. We do benchmarking costs for all our line items in our reports before we tender to give us a good idea of what the cost will be. And the majority of those line items were twenty to sixty percent more than they would have been in a normal given year. It also doesn't help that the tender go a bit out a bit later in the year as well. So that with the uncertainties is the most significant reason why the price would be higher than anticipated. The, what also can be seen is that we had twenty-three people bid on the, the tender itself, but only two actually submitted bids and ideally you have more bids to have a more committed pricing as matter.
Council Gaffney, a follow-up?
Yes, thank you your worship. Would be, there was an item added late in the process of a alternate, alternate way of excavating the project to save or to attempt to save the, some of the trees. Did that additional item end up being a lot more costly than what was originally estimated? Do you know?
Through your worship, sorry, I haven't had a chance to look into the details of what the final numbers were for that project.
Okay, thank you, thank you your worship.
Anything further? If not, motion to receive the report, I believe has been made in second, correct, Madam Clerk? All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item seven point two is a proclamation for the Canadians from the Canadian Personal Support Worker Network. And there is a motion that city council hereby proclaims May nineteenth as Personal Support Worker Day in the city of Strapper and recognition and respect for their tireless effort during the pandemic and every day.
Moved by Council Vazalacos and Council Henderson, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, carry it.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding transit accessible bus shelter tender. And there is a staff recommendation that the tender for the supply and installation of twelve five by ten and two four by eight accessible bus shelters and concrete paths as required be awarded to Daytech Limited in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents, including HST. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Moved by Council Ritzma, seconded by Council Burbak, discussion. Council Gaffney.
Thank you again, your worship, through you. The one that's going at Waterloo and Ontario Street, that's going to be on Waterloo Street where the existing stop is now?
Mr. Mosley.
Through your worship, that's correct, to be right where the bench is presently now, so to be in the, almost in the same exact spot.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item seven point four is a resolution for road widening. And there is a staff recommendation of corporation of the city of Strapper except part one on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight forty-five as public highway and dedicate as forming part of Vivian Street, line thirty-seven.
Moved by Council Vazalacos, seconded by Council Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item seven point five is a proclamation from infinite pride Strapper. And there is a motion that city council hereby proclaimed June two thousand and twenty-one as pride month in the city of Strapper and authorizes the flying of the pride flag at Strapper City Hall for the month of June.
Move, Council Henderson, seconded by Council Ritzma, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, and that's carried.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding the lease of a one fifty McCarthy Road West for farming purposes. And there is a staff recommendation that in agreement with Senova Farm Incorporated for the lease of fifteen point three acres of farmland located at one fifty McCarthy Road West for a period of two years, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two be awarded and that the mayor and city clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the agreement.
Council Gaffney and Council Vazalacos, moving in second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding the consideration of temporarily making Wellington Street one-way. And there is a staff recommendation that the existing lane configuration and direction of travel on Wellington Street from Saint Patrick Street to Downey Street be maintained.
Moved by Council Bunting and seconded by Council Clifford, discussion. Council Burbak.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank staff for taking the time to create the report and I thought it was a very valuable discussion to have. And it's something that we can also look, look at the information for the future in case we decide that that's something that we want to go ahead with. I, I do like the recommendation. I guess it was option four to create a one-way which would have a pedestrian access path close to Market Square. So I won't be supporting this resolution, but I, I look forward to bringing this discussion back in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? Two opposed, let's carry it.
Item seven point eight is a resolution to appoint municipal by law enforcement officer. And there is a staff recommendation that council amend bylaw sixty dash two thousand and three as amended to appoint Kelton Frey as a municipal by law enforcement officer for the city of Strapper commencing May tenth. And that the appointment of Rob Renner as municipal by law enforcement officer for the city be rescinded.
Moved by Council Vazalacos and seconded by Council Burbak, discussion. All in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item eight, business which previous notice has been given and there was none scheduled. So moving to section nine, report to the standing committees. Item nine point one is the community services committee and there are two items listed for consideration that as follows. Item nine point one point one is the or insurance Almond Arena score clock advertising agreement renewal. And item nine point one point two is the free transit during the pandemic.
Council BD will move and seconded by Council Seven, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item nine point two is the report of the social services committee. There are four items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point two point one, social services relief fund phase reallocation. Item nine point two point two, alternative housing pilot federal provincial funding update. Item nine point two point three, alternative housing pilot federal provincial funding update. And item nine point two point four, update on social services relief funding.
Moved by Council Henderson and seconded by Council Bunting, discussion. All in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it.
Item ten is notice of intent and there was none scheduled. So moving to item eleven, reading of the bylaws. There are six bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item eleven point one is repeal of bylaw seven dash two thousand and one, authorizing the signing of the contribution agreement for the social service relief fund phase two fullback for the construction of eight modular supportive housing units. Item eleven point two is the agreement for use of advertising space on the score clock at William Almond Memorial Arena. Item eleven point three to accept transfer part one on plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight forty-five. Item eleven point four is dedication of public highway forming part of Vivian line thirty-seven. Item eleven point five is a lease agreement for one fifty McCarthy Road West. And item eleven point six is appoint municipal by law enforcement officer. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unit vote of council presence.
Moved by Council Henderson and seconded by Council Burbak, they be taken collectively? All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry unanimously, so we'll go to first and second reading. Moved by Council Vazalacos and seconded by Council BD, that bylaws eleven, one through six be read at first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it. Moving for third and final reading, Council Gaffney and Council Bunting, the bylaws eleven, one through six, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, and that's carried.
Item twelve is a consent agenda, are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Council Vazalacos.
I was wondering if we could endorse CA two thousand and twenty-one sixty-two, that's the water protection legislation from Fort Erie. And I'm wondering if council could endorse that.
You'll move, Doris, Council Vazalacos, Council Ritzma, you'll second that? Further, all those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it. Anything else on the consent agenda? Next item.
Through your worship, item thirteen is new business, are there any new business items?
Council Seven.
Thank you, I wanted to, I guess, sort of revisit the, the fees and the install that businesses for boardwalks and pop-up patios are, are being, I guess, charged. And I know we had discussion about this for waiving some of the applicants fees, but I, I guess what, after, I, I had a couple of business owners reach out to me and, and I feel like, I feel like this might be something that would be worthwhile reconsidering waiving the fees. I'm just bringing this up because I feel like it aligns in a way to me that is similar to the way that bed and breakfast fees, we've, we've waived those for last year and this year. And so I, I just would either, I guess I'm just looking for either, I guess I have to decide, but possibly a report to bring back at the next meeting to look at how much that would cost. And because I would like to see that be waived for, for all the applicants for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, you move that, second for that motion? Council Burbak, Council Henderson.
Do we not just have a report at our last meeting? Maybe the, the clerk would be able to tell us now and then we could make a decision. Because if you're waiting till the next meeting, that's end of May, right?
I'll recognize Deputy Clerk, Mr. Bantock.
So through your worship, last year, the boardwalk fees were approximately eight hundred dollars per delivery, install and removal. So the recommendation that was passed earlier this year on the previous report recommended that same, not to exceed that fee. So if it was lower, then that would be the fee that was charged. We're expecting again that it will be around that fee. However, we do have, I believe there are five fewer applicants at this time. So the total cost at this time would be slightly less than it was last year. I believe it was about sixteen thousand was the cost last year for boardwalk delivery, install and removal. And then the remaining costs on top of that would only be for applicants from last year's program that are participating this year. And again, I believe there are about fourteen at this time. But the, they are the reduced fees, so you have your boardwalks participants paying the one ninety-six per month. And then the various pop-up costs per month. So those fees, because they've been reduced already, will be less, it's really the, the boardwalk installation, delivery and removal costs that is the most substantive at this time remaining.
Thank you. Council Seven and Council Vazalacos.
Actually, I'll let, I'll let Council Vazalacos go first.
So I believe this would require council reconsideration. And, and so part of this is, is I do know we've had correspondence from businesses about the boardwalk fee, but then also about patio fees and a number of different fees. So if, if we could list, I know that we don't want to defer this or make a decision, but I don't have all the details around what businesses are asking for and what pressures they have. And I know when we made this decision, it was before we headed into this lockdown. It was before we realized lockdown is probably in all likelihood going to be extended. And so I think the calculus of economic recovery is going to be slightly different. So I know, I, I would like to see us reconsider all of the fees that go into it, but at the same time, not having them, not having all of the, the information in front of us, I think it's very difficult to, to open up the discussion again. So I, I don't know whether it falls under new business, but I'm wondering if we could list this as a notice of motion for the next meeting to reconsider the patio and boardwalk fees. And that way, at least it's a notice of motion, we could have recirculated all that information around the economic costs. And also would give us a little bit of opportunity to reach out to the city senate BIA and some of their members and see where they're sitting in terms of, of their business right down, get, right now, given the lockdown.
Council Henderson.
I think if we're gonna do that, I believe Chris said that there was like five that weren't participating. And if, say, we make a decision that we're gonna cover the cost, those five may decide to do it again. I'm not sure if it's the cost that's prohibiting them or staff or what the problem is, but that's something we should look into also.
Council Seven.
I would, I would withdraw my motion if Council Vazalacos wants to put her motion forward.
So if the mover, Council Burbak is the second or your final, that Council Vazalacos, would you like to put a notice of motion forward?
Yes, please, notice of motion reconsidering both the boardwalk and patio fees for the season to be listed at the next meeting.
Council Bunting, you'll second that? Second for that, Council Burbak, then Council Bunting, sorry.
Through you, your worship, just a point to bring up is that it's my understanding that the patios are going to be installed, as of this Thursday are starting to be installed and, and be finished by May the twentieth, at least that's what the hopes are. I'm not saying that we can't do the fee thing afterwards, but I'm just bringing it to your attention, that's all.
Thank you. Anything further? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Again, can I have the hands, one? One, two, three, four, five, opposed?
I just, I wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Council Henderson.
If we're installing the patios, like, starting next week, I would wonder if we should be checking with the five that didn't want to do it this year because it will probably be cheaper for us to bring them all out at the same time and do them rather than do, what was it, fourteen, fifteen or something that we're gonna do at this time? And then, and then if we change the fees and the other ones decide they want to go and do it and then they want to come in later, it would cost us more, I would think.
Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, so right now staff are in a position where we're trying to be proactive and get the boardwalks out as soon as we can so that we can try and align it if outdoor dining is permitted to resume. So at this time, we're only putting out boardwalks for those that we've received completed applications for and which have been approved. Just because we don't know which future or additional applications may come in.
Council Henderson.
Could we have a quick meeting on this before, before they're gonna start the boardwork going back out? Because staff already has all the information, so maybe we could have something later this week. That way, if they're gonna bring, if, if more people want to come on, they're all going on at the same time, just an idea. Because otherwise, they won't be dealing with it till the twenty-fifth and that's after the long weekend.
I see Mr. Council Bunting has his hand up.
Thank you, your worship, with respect to the installation last year, was it done pro bono by contractors and volunteers?
Council City Clerk, Mr. Fo.
Through your worship, yes, last year through the Economic Recovery Task Force, they did secure contractors. And I believe some of it was funded through the grant funding. This year, the city is responsible for the cost, which is why the fees were paid. With respect to Counselor Henderson's suggestion, we would strongly recommend not waiting to install the boardwalk. Once the boardwalks are installed, the restaurants will then need to set up their patio. And we have to complete an inspection with our chief building official and our health unit and fire to ensure that it complies with all of the regulations of the day. So if we were to wait for all further applications to be included, it could delay it even further. So we would recommend proceeding with the install for the approved applications that we have now.
So do we, do we have an estimation as to how much, how much staff time would be involved with this now that it's no longer volunteer? Like in cost involved?
So through you, we're just by, understand the question correctly, we have secured a contractor again and the fees quoted by the deputy clerk are the cost for the install.
Thank you.
All right, anyone further? Council Henderson.
I was misunderstood there, that was the idea behind us having another meeting within, say, a day or two so that nothing is held up and we can make a decision. And that way, if somebody else wants to get back in, because my understanding was we weren't starting installation till next week?
The twentieth.
Right, so if we could have something right away, and that way, if anybody else changes their mind, it can all be done at once, especially if we change how much we're gonna charge. That could have a big impact on a, a smaller business that, you know, has to get patio tables and get everything out, just an idea.
Yeah, Mr. Fo is.
So through the chair, just looking to the deputy clerk, we would still recommend proceeding with the currently approved application. Once a business decides they want to apply, they still have to fill out the application, submit required insurance as well as a drawing. It would then need to be circulated to all the internal, external agencies. And that does take a little bit of time, everyone has been working extremely fast and trying to approve them as quickly as possible. But that could just further delay already approved applications. So we would recommend proceeding forth with the approved application. And should anyone want to come on, then we would be happy to review the application and arrange for the install at a later date.
Anything further, Council Vazalacos?
And, and that would be like, my suggestion was that we revisit the fees, not necessarily stopping all the activity that's going on right now in terms of, of people who are all ready to, to do the installations. I'm open to, if, if, if staff feel that having an additional meeting would be useful to give time for, like, to give additional time before the installs. And I'm, I'm open to my notice being for a special meeting, but that would be, you know, contingent on everyone's schedule and, and staff time and everything else.
Right, further? Council Bunting.
Thank you, your worship, I, I guess my, my, my thought would be, what if the people who didn't reapply as it were, it applied and we're gonna make them free? And all of a sudden, there's two or three or four more other ones. We're looking at more materials, more labor to construct them and so on and so forth. So those are things worthy of consideration.
Mr. Bantock, do you have any information on that?
Through your worship, we do have about four or five sets remaining, just based on the number of applications received and those that have been approved. But to answer Council Bunting's question, yes, there is a limited number of boardwalks available.
All right, is there anything further? The question then is on a notice of motion to be heard at the May twenty-fifth council meeting. All those in favor? Council Henderson, are you in favor against? Favor, okay, opposed? Or opposed, the motion carries? Thank you, next item.
Through your worship, item fourteen is adjournment to standing committees. And there is a motion that council meeting adjourned to convene into standing committees as follows the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee and to reconvene into council following.
Moved by Council Ritzma, seconded by Council Burbak, that we adjourned for the purposes of standing committee. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny, let's carry it, I'll turn the meeting over to Council Vazalacos' chair.
It'll be, it'll be Council Burbak covering this meeting.
Okay, Council Burbak, over to you.
Thank you, I'd like to call to order the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee. First of all, do, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and in general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three, we do have an adoption of the addenda already added. Item four, we have subcommittee minutes for your information. Item five, we will move to the addenda. Five point one is a proposed closure of TJ, TJ Dolan Drive from Center Street to Saint David Street. And we have a request from the following citizens to address the committee with respect to this matter. Patrick O'Rourke and Kirk Rail. And I would also like to ask for a motion that we would hear from them and that also that we would accept the correspondence from the list of residents about the same matter. Council Gaffney, you're moving that? Item, Council Vazalaco seconding, all those in favor? Okay, that's carried. So first up, we would hear from Mr. O'Rourke.
Excuse me, disappoint, I believe that, I believe the clerk has signed it, she wishes to address.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
The chair, if we could add the delegation request for Ms. Jane Marie Mitchell as well, that is noted on your agenda as well.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that as well?
If you could move in second the hearing of Ms. Jane Marie Mitchell, that would be great.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Vazalacos, seconded by Counselor Ritzma, all in favor? Okay, that's carried, thank you. So now we'll move to hearing from Mr. O'Rourke for his presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak on, on this proposal. I think the correspondence you've received pretty clearly demonstrates both public position and opposition, and some of the problems with the proposal, including fact that TJ Dolan is already a mode of use road. It's like TJ Dolan from St. Vincent to Euron, McLaughlin on the other side of the river from John to Avon. There's no need to convert it to mode of use, it already is. It's also clear that the management report understates the impact of the closure. Requires the creation of a parking lot on Center Street where there's currently a memorial garden. Turnaround on St. David, if you've driven down there, realize it will impact green space and number of trees on the, the south side of TJ Dolan. It's hard to tell from the management report because there are no drawings to identify exactly where these things are going to go. And also, the report fails to consider option four. Leave TJ, leave TJ Dolan as it is and fund some other infrastructure and accessibility project. I don't want to go into detail on these points, it's been done in a number of letters. But I do want to talk about the context, the process that led us to here today. As I understand it, the city was informed of somewhere around $300,000 in provincial funding for infrastructure projects. Staff then came forward to committee with this proposal. It was a staff reference. Subsequently, according to the management report, the city applied for funds for this proposal before council had approved it. In effect, staff have made a decision on the best use of this provincial funding, and they're now seeking councils, okay. I think this process is flawed. Staff, when informed of the funding, should have prepared a list of potential projects, and their pros and cons, and in consultation with the city's Accessibility Advisory Committee, and for projects in the downtown core of the BIA. This list of possible projects have gone to council, where council could decide which ones best meet the city's objectives, community needs of residents. Because at the core, I fundamentally believe elected members of council, not staff, should make decisions on how best to spend the taxpayers' money. I urge the committee to reject the proposed closure and to direct staff to do what I think they really should have done at the start. Consult with Advisory Committee and the BIA. There are a list of projects that meet the criteria of the provincial funding, and return that to committee with analysis and recommendations. I realize that the $100,000 is not a great sum of money, but the principle remains. With regard to alternative projects, I believe the Shakespearean gardens, which have serious accessibility problems, merits consideration. In terms of impact, far more people visit the gardens on a sunny day than when you use TJ Dolan in a week. It's a bigger problem, greater benefit. In any event, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and again, I urge you to say no.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Does anybody on council have questions for Mr. O'Rourke? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next presenter, Kirk Rail. Mr. Rail.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, the previous speaker addressed almost everything that I had to point out to the council today. All with the fact that TJ Dolan currently now is very a park-like setting. And to go ahead and put two parking lots in the cul-de-sac at either end of it, you end up with, with nothing but inconsistency between the TJ Dolan natural area and the currently proposed walking path. My other concern goes back to the winter maintenance on, on the hill. Cars parked in the cul-de-sac, trying to make up for the hill, get stuck, and now how do we get them off the hill? Because we have no emergency road access to come in on the other way. That's a great concern I have. Thank you very much for hearing my concerns, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do any members of council have questions for Mr. Rail? Seeing none, we'll move to our last presenter, please.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead, please.
Thank you for allowing me to be heard. I saw on the agenda the three options that council had to consider, and I'd like to support option two, and wish to explain why. I see a trail on the north side, a one-way street in the middle, and parking on the south side. The barrier of the curb would help to ensure safety, but I also suggest a reduced speed limit of 20 kilometers an hour to help slow vehicles down. I see a narrow entrance from St. David's Street or a one-way street with the speed limit posted there to help ensure safety. I don't understand why two of the existing streetlights require relocation, but this would allow everyone to access the area, even vehicles. Residents living close by may be in favor of a trail only, but they don't have to travel to enjoy the environment. I tend to use the area more on the weekend when there's lots of tourists in the city. Question. Other than the observations that I made to council with about five to 11 vehicles parked while I was there on TJ Dolan, is there any data to show how many vehicles use this part of TJ Dolan? An hour ago, I counted 13 vehicles. Lots of people use this for parking. Another question. How many square meters of pavement recently paved in 2017 will have to be torn up to put pavement elsewhere? Another suggestion is to have a bike rack for those who wish to bike to the trail and then walk into the trail, especially across from St. John's Street. With $400 and $2,000 available for this project, I still suggest adding a washroom facility, as none exist west of the boathouse to serve those traveling along the river, the cemetery in TJ Dolan, trail and drive. With the number of people traveling in the area, there is demand, and it would be welcomed. I do support leaving it the way it is as well, because things are going fine. If safety is an important issue, then the curb would be a good idea. But in conclusion, I feel it's a win-win situation, making the area more accessible for more people to enjoy the natural environment of the area that's offered. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the, to item six. Stuff to switch my screen, sorry. To item 6.1, the proposed closure of TJ Dolan Drive from Center Street to St. David's Street. And we do have attached a staff report, and maybe I'll ask if Mr. Dulevik is perhaps presenting this because he did prepare the report, or Mr. Pinklaw? There he is.
Yeah, through the chair, since I, I did prepare the report, it was decided that I would speak to the report. And, and as noted in the report, I'll just go over a few highlights. You know, we did contact police, fire, and ambulance services, or paramedic services. They expressed no concerns with the closure of the section of TJ Dolan if it was to be done. There was also a discussion at the city's Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and they did pass a motion in favor of the closure of the road from St. David to Center Street and conversion to a multi-use trail. I did want to talk about, there was a comment made with respect to memorial gardens. They will not be removed, they will not be touched. When we talked about parking, it was very limited parking. I know during the discussions at the last meeting, a couple of meetings when this was discussed by, by, by council, suggestion was maybe just use the end of TJ Dolan at Center Street to accommodate some parking. So we were talking maybe four or five spaces at most to use some of that existing hard surface that's there and converting some of that at Center Street for some, for some parking to make up for what was lost on TJ Dolan, but no way we were considering constructing a large parking lot to make up for, for the loss along TJ Dolan, that wasn't the intent. Another comment was made as to how this got here. This came up as a result of when we first dealt with the closure and conversion of TJ Dolan from St. Vincent to St. David to a multi-use trail. One of the questions that came up from a counselor was, well, can we look at the rest of TJ Dolan from St. David to Center Street? So it was based on those comments made at, when we looked at that first section, that staff looked at the next section, this section here. So it was based on that that we, we reviewed this. With respect to the application that was made, it was something that came, came out, and there was a quick response required by staff. We looked at this, it's a, it's a purpose application, was for active transportation, and we were required to name a project, and this project was named. We do expect an announcement by the federal and provincial government within a week or two as to whether we were successful. Really, the, the money is, is ours. What they said was that this is your money, they just needed to approve of the project and wanted to make sure that it fulfilled their mandate of active transportation. So that, that's where we're at. So when we looked at, you know, we looked at a number of options, I know some people, you know, were talking about the road. There was work done in 2017 by Public Works where you put a lot of asphalt down, but both operations staff and engineering staff have commented that the road base is not suitable, there isn't proper under drainage. And, and as some people have commented, there's not a lot of vehicles that use this section of road, and already we're seeing some, some, some issues coming through on the road because of the, the poor road base that's in there. And as noted in the report, to properly fix that road, we're talking approximately $200,000. That's kind of a rundown, so as, as I said, we looked at three options. So if there are any more questions from council with respect to it, I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Counselor Vazalacos.
I have a question in terms of, so the multi-use path that will be going in, there will be a multi-use path. And it, the, the idea would be to disposition further away from the river, so there's an additional green space addition to the parkland. And that the plan would be to allow to add benches and in the future picnic tables. So part of the conversion away from a road that's hard to maintain and expensive to keep redoing, even though it's too close to the river, is that it expands our parkland, that it, that it reclaims parkland and, and increases public space for use of this, is this correct?
Yeah, through the chair, as noted, the, the alignment of the trail would be proposed to be more in, in the center of the existing road alignment, which would then create more green space between the trail and the edge of the river. So that would be the intent. This would allow then spa, a space for benches, as noted, picnic tables along, between the trail and the river as an amenity along that section. And again, that can be explored if this project were to go ahead in the future to install those type of amenities.
So the other question I had was around the, there's, so I'm assuming there's an ongoing cost to maintenance of the current road, but also in terms of winter maintenance and salt application. But one of the things that I was, I was looking at that road, and all of the salt and sand runoff from that current road would be going into the river or, or, so I'm just thinking about the environmental impact of the current road that's so close to the river. It, for a road that doesn't have, you know, isn't, isn't connected to storm, doesn't have curbing, all of those kinds of things. And so from an environmental impact perspective, going to a multi-use trail would reduce the amount of salt and sand that would end up in the river system, I'm assuming.
Yeah, through the chair, you know, this, this, the intent is to maintain this trail year-round, as we're doing with other trails for access. But because it's a smaller hard surface, it is a paved surface that we're talking about here, there would be less sand and salt that would be the amounts that were applied to the road versus what would be applied to the trail would be less, so it'd be less of that. And also, you have a larger green strip that could capture some of that material coming off of a trail before it got to the river.
That's it for now, thanks.
Great, Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the staff recommendation, and I have a question and something to say.
Okay, do you have a second there for the Counselor Vazalacos? Okay, go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, the slope on St. David's Street from TJ Dolan, it's not going to change, I expect.
Through the chair, no, there'll be no, no, no changes there.
So it'll be the same as next winter as it was last winter?
Yes.
Yes. And I just want to make it perfectly clear to everyone, everyone on council and everyone viewing in, that I was the one who made the suggestion at subcommittee, because I thought to myself after we had that discussion about the TJ Dolan between St. David and St. Vincent, that extension of TJ Dolan is basically a shortcut for two houses. It's really not a major, majorly traveled road to get from point A to point B for everyday traffic, I suggest. So that's what, that's what made me ask the question, and here we are today, so thank you.
Counselor Henderson.
I am, I was just thinking we should have another option is, when we were deciding about whether to close from the TJ Dolan from St. Vincent to St. David, we shut the road down for one year and to get feedback from anybody that was using it. Why aren't we doing that with this? Because we already see how much feedback we're getting, and I'm sure there's others that aren't going to be aware that this is going to happen, that it's going to affect them. And, and Counselor Gaffney, did you say option two? Is that what you were saying?
Option three.
That was this enough recommendation that you moved was option three?
And I won't be able to support that. At the minimum, I think we should have at least one trail coming through there, because as the people on St. David's Streets have already mentioned, and that when there's ice, it's hard for them to go up the hill. So at least if we had one way coming down and through, it's a relatively quiet area. I myself never seen anybody speeding along there because just the elements of the trees and the, the nature of the area, people tend to, I don't know, feel like they're more in a nature area, and they go, seem to go slower from what I've seen. And I see a lot of people fishing off the dam there and parking along the edge. So I think it's smart that we have a multi-use trail coming along because we're coming, you know, from St. Vincent, and then we can continue, and then you can go into the TJ Dolan actual park area. But I can't, I can't, I can't support closing it completely unless we do a year shutdown and get feedback from that.
Could Mr. Dulevik, could you possibly answer the possibility of, of waiting a year to do that? And maybe how that might affect funding?
Through the chair, yeah, that may have an impact on funding. And of course, firstly, I don't remember the timelines, but there was some time restrictions on when the money had to be spent by, and I'd have to, staff would have to confirm. the money had to be spent by, and I'd have to, staff would have to confirm when that that money would have to be spent by.
Can we use that funding for something else?
Again, through the chair, we'll have to wait for the announcement. We may then have to go back, if it's possible, to ask for another project then. And not sure what the timeline would, if that's allowed, and what the timeline would be to get a response from from the federal government and the provincial government.
So basically, if we get it, it's not really our money. It's only projects specific, right?
Through the chair, yeah, it was specific to active transportation projects as what we we applied for under the stream. It's very limited as to what this money could be used for.
Counselor Vasilekis.
Sorry, so I'm gonna, I'm obviously in support of of the the motion. And one of the challenges we have is is that maintaining a road, even a one-way road with the weights of the vehicles. It's a it's an expensive, short little stretch, like Counselor Gaffney says. Like, it's it's very, very expensive for the for the amount of traffic that needs to use it. It's not a linkage that that cars absolutely need. It doesn't, it it's a quick little shortcut, but even the shortcut doesn't save a whole lot of distance when you do it. And yet converting it to a multi-use trail and adding green space is something that the entire community can benefit from. And one of the things that I I like about it is it creates a linkage that has the potential to make, if you if you start, let's say, at the park system at the Huron Bridge, you can make a pedestrian cycling-only linkages all the way out if you go, you know, through the service road behind Janan, and and it's a trail there. You can go all the way out to alone and hit the multi-use trail there. So when we start to talk about connectivity and building connectivity, we spent years doing little bits and pieces around the city going, okay, eventually we'll fill this in. Eventually we'll fill this in. And here's our opportunity to fill this piece in, which creates a a really nice active transportation system that also adds parkland amenity for citizens. And and the the idea of the ongoing cost of maintenance and redoing asphalt on that that stretch of road so close to the river, it doesn't make any sense to me to continue it. People will still have access to go fishing. They'll still have access to to park and use the system. It's just that that little stretch is not necessary for for car transportation.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask, with all these emails and talking about a parking lot in the park, I was going to ask our director, is like, is there a proper drawing of what's going to happen? Kathy was talking about it's going to be back from the river, but is there a real drawing to show us exactly the location of the path and the parking on Center Street?
Mr. Dulevik.
Through the chair, I I know it was to the director, and you'd have to ask the director if there's been any work done on on the design for this project. I'm not aware if it's if it started yet. I think it mostly did some surveying. I do want to say, thanks to the director, I've provided some information as to when the construction has to be completed. I knew it was tight. I didn't realize it was this tight, but they say the project has to be completed by the end of September of this year.
Counselor Henderson.
Just one more thing, when we talk about that, it makes it accessible for everyone. It doesn't make it accessible for anybody that's in a wheelchair and likes to drive along that section. So the 10 to 15% of our population that has accessible needs will no longer be able to enjoy that section.
I I I don't really understand the comment because people in wheelchairs can use multi-use paths too. They can drive, park and and use that path safely. So I'm not quite sure. It's it's cars that we're limiting. We're not closing the the we're not closing any any part of TJ Dolan. We're actually opening it up to use for for people, but we are limiting the use of of motorized vehicles.
There are some people that, you know, are in cars when they drive along and look at things that have accessible needs. And since we haven't seen the drawings, I don't know how the parking is going to be on Center Street, coming down a hill in a wheelchair to be able to get around onto the TJ Dolan. I haven't seen any of those drawings, so I don't know how that's going to happen. That'd be pretty steep.
Counselor Seven and then Counselor Vasilekis.
Thank you. So I mean, I guess, yeah, so I personally, I don't support really any changes to the TJ Dolan road. I was biking down there actually yesterday, coming up that stretch of road from the portion that we have already closed to to this portion. And, you know, it seems like every time I'm down there, there are cars parked along the side of the road. I feel like closing the first portion made sense. But this portion feels like it's a case of if it isn't broken, I don't really see, I don't really see the benefit to spending the money and the resources on on changing it. I think I think we have a low traffic, which has been acknowledged in this discussion. We have a low-traffic road that you're able to, you know, bike on, active transportation, drive through, people can park there. We don't really have a known shortage of parking, but there is adequate parking. And if we're going to be taking that parking away and replacing it with a few spots, maybe four, we're really looking at, we're restricting, we're going to be opening up this area, as was mentioned in the discussion, to possibly more park space, more benches, things like that, to attract people there. But we're going to have more people wanting to go there potentially. At at the least, we'll have more people or the same, and we'll have much less parking. Counselor Henderson raises a good point. Right now, you can go down there if you have accessibility needs, you can go and park right down by the water and get out if you wish there. Many people drive down there that don't live close to TJ Dolan, either to enjoy the nature trails or to enjoy any of that area. It's quite nice. And a lot of people don't live there or aren't aren't able to use active transportation to get to that part of town. And so I feel like we're really cutting those people out. We have a lot of park space in by the river and everywhere, but we also have a lot of parking to accommodate that park space. So people can drive down there, park right in the middle of it, and then enjoy it from there. And I don't see why we would treat this any different. I think I think the need for people to drive there, whether or not whether or not we want them to drive there is a whole other discussion. But I think people need to drive there. Some people need to, some people choose to. And I think that that that's perfectly okay, and I think we need to leave that as an option. So I don't support the motion.
Counselor Vasilekis.
I was just going to speak to Counselor Henderson that the parking isn't on Center Street on the hill. The parking would be at the bottom, like the whole, the idea of putting the multi-use trail and moving it back would be that you would free up some some room at the end there at the TJ Dolan for for parking. And what's different now is the parking right now is just gravel. Whereas if you could at least have, so if somebody were to drive there that had mobility issues, you could provide parking that is more accessible, like you're not pulling out into onto onto gravel.
Counselor Henderson.
Well, I'm not sure how you would do that. That's pretty narrow at the bottom there. I lived in that neighborhood. And you'd have to have it on the slope like Water Street is, only it would be more steeper than Water Street. Because Center Street, as far as I know, is a bigger angle going up than Water Street is. And they have their angle parking there, like, unless you mean they're going to cut the corner off and have it like you pull into the parking type thing.
Maybe Mr. Dulevik could speak to where the parking would be. Because I don't think it was on Center Street that they were envisioning putting the parking.
Yes, through the chair. No, we were not envisioning using, like, creating a parking lot on Center Street. But all we talked about was using on existing existing parallel parking on 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 Center that could be used. The idea was is that where TJ Dolan meets Center Street, there's a flat area there. As you're coming down Center Street and you can make that turn, there's a fair bit of asphalt that's sitting in there. So the the idea was is to create use some of that area in there to create about, you know, four to five parking spots. That was the intent. It wasn't about creating any other type of parking that would go into the existing green space that fronts onto Center.
Thank you. Actually, further to that, I did have a question about St. David, at the end of St. David, where it's going, where it would become a cul-de-sac in this proposal. There would also be parking along that stretch on the side closer to the train tracks. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, you know, there are there aren't any parking restrictions in now and and you can see that, you know, occasionally cars do use that. They could. You know, we're looking at minimizing what the cul-de-sac would look like, probably, you know, a hammerhead, bit of a hammerhead design is something to look at that could minimize any type of green space that would be required in that area. But there there's that option as well, too. There's there's also on St. David's and on Center Street for for on-street parking.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor? And those opposed? So I think since I I'm going to vote favor, that's five, five. So I would ask the clerk what what comes next.
So through the chair, as a tie vote, the motion is defeated.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vasilekis.
But being this is in committee, it will come back to council, correct, this vote?
Through the chair, unless there was no other motion made, the the item would just be listed to be filed.
Counselor Bunting.
Yes, thank you. I certainly don't want to see it being filed. I'm full agreement for the St. Vincent to St. David being. But without the the drawing, and I'm not talking about a technical drawing, a sketch that actually indicates, so that we're perfectly clear exactly what it is we're voting on, would be much appreciated. And if this can be brought up at to council, then we at the moment, it's just words on a piece of paper. And I know I read it several times, and I'm trying to figure out exactly what's going on here. And of course, when you combine that with all the, I guess, the misapprehension or misinformation that the people had with regards to the the green space and the the memory garden or the being being interfered with in some way, shape or form, it just caused complete confusion. So a picture says a thousand words in my my book, and I would like to sort of see that, something like that, so we could have a good look at it. Thank you.
Counselor Gaffney.
I'll second Counselor Bunting's referral motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're asking for the motion to be referred referred back to staff?
Yep.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you. Just wondering, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful if a direction could be given as to you want to map. But is there a particular option or something in particular that you would like the the drawing just to assist staff in providing the information that you're requesting?
Is it option three that we're considering that we'd like a drawing of option three only and not the other options? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly? I guess at Counselor Bunting, it's your motion, so.
Yes, I I would I would make it for option three.
Counselor Gaffney, is that? Did you second that?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. I I agree with Counselor Bunting.
Okay. Counselor Henderson.
I would like to see option two. At the very minimum, at least there's one trail through there. That's one win.
Mayor Matheson.
I think you want to look at other the other option as well. At least give yourself some grounding so that three doesn't pass. There is an opportunity to look at other other design.
Okay, Counselor Bunting.
Friendly amendment, that's acceptable to include option two and three. And a sketch, we're not looking at detailed drawings. We're talking at what it would look like.
Any other comments? Counselor Vasilekis.
And is that to come back to the council meeting where it comes to council or back to committee?
Asking, going to ask the, perhaps staff, give us some idea, is if it's possible for it to come to council, that would be more expedient.
Sure.
And Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you. Perhaps if staff could take that back, and while we're working on the the drawings, we will have a discussion on procedure. And we'll we'll advise you whether it's coming back to this committee or directly to council for the next next meeting on the 25th.
Thank you. Are there any other further comments? Counselor Henderson.
I just wondered, I was wondering if it makes a difference whether the trails on the north side or the south side. I'm assuming you want it on the north side so that the cars aren't as close to the road if we end up going with a one-way. But what was the reasoning behind having it on the north side versus the south side? Because I noticed it says something about you have to move streetlights. So maybe if it was on the other side, you wouldn't have.
Mr. Dulevik.
Yeah, through the chair, the issue was just to create the room. There's that, it's the first section when you're coming from St. David's. It's very, it's very, it's narrow there to create the trail. And it's just just in that area to slightly, if you're talking about the one-way option, I'm assuming, Counselor Henderson. And it's just a slight shift that would have to be done there. I think, you know, the the biggest shift would happen if we did option one, where you tried to construct a trail along and maintaining the two lanes of traffic. So it's not as much, but what we were trying to do is line up the trail so it would be closer to to the to the water side.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask, we're talking about option two and option three. I'd asked our acting director, what's the cost difference between option two and option three?
Maybe Mr. Dulevik can answer that one.
To the chair, it's something the staff to look at in more detail. You know, they they did talk about the road reconstruction of being about, you know, $200,000. So, you know, you're, I would think at least $100,000 if we look at reconstructing a one-lane road. But that's something that engineering staff would would have to would have to confirm. So that would be in addition to some of the costs that we had indicated previously.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor? Those opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you, everyone. 6.2 is passive house standards and net zero-ready homes. We do have a staff recommendation that the development of green standard policy, including the development of programs to offset the associated costs, such as a reduction in development charges or property tax relief, be referred to the 2022 budget. Counselor Henderson. Are you moving that? Yeah, okay. And Counselor Vasilekis, seconding. Any comments? Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, when I read the report, I I also think it's it's important that, but like with what we've got out of Ottawa, with our the extra taxes that Ottawa is is like from gas tax and and what this. So I would hope if we're going to do something like this, it would be helped that either Ottawa or the province would help also. Because I think for municipality to do it themselves, I I think it's the the whole issue about greenhouse gas, it's it's an issue for the province and for like for Canada. So I would hope we'd have some help from Ottawa in particular.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we'll vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Item seven is a report of the manager of Environmental Services, 7.1. Thank you. Um, we're, uh, item seven is a report of the manager of environmental services, 7.1 is update of sewer policy S. Point 1.8 and sewer policy S. Point 1.10. Uh, I'm not sure if, uh, staff member would like to speak to this report. Uh, that maybe the manager of, um, the director of, okay, go ahead, Mr. Krenshaw.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, I guess in short, this report, uh, was brought forth, just to clear up some of the language, um, from what was previously presented back in the, the fall, just to be clear that the, uh, the city's position is that we will only replace, um, one service in a shared service-type scenario.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so we needed somebody to move the staff recommendation, Counselor Gaffney, and seconded by Counselor Vasalacos. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Henderson?
Sorry, um, so what Taylor was saying there, Taylor, Taylor was saying there about, um, only, so is that talking about like if it's semi or uh, um, an apartment building or something? Is that what you mean? It just.
Through the chair, um, in many older subdivision throughout the city, um, two houses, um, often or sometimes, uh, share a single sanitary service, and this creates problems when there's backing up and who's responsible, uh, that kind of thing, and the idea is that if people want to separate their service, that there is a subsidy provided for, for that to happen.
Can you explain what you meant by it would only be for one?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, so, um, the, since there already is one service effectively in place, that one would remain, and to ensure that they're separated, the city would bring in another service, um, so that the houses will remain stable. Uh, we wouldn't replace the existing one because it operates effectively and, and we wouldn't touch that, just provide a new service.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing and no other comments, all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Uh, 7.2, uh, is the 2020 Stratford Water Pollution Control Plant Annual Report. And we do have a staff recommendation that it be received for information. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Bunty, moving and seconding. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Um, item eight is the report of the events coordinator, 8.1 is a request for exemption from the noise control bylaw for the hub Stratford's five-year anniversary. Uh, the staff recommendation is that approval will be given to the request. Anyone like to make that motion? Counselor Henderson, are you making the motion to approve that? Just need someone to second that. Counselor Seven, any comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you. Um, item nine is for the information of the committee, uh, several items there. And item 10 is adjournment. Counselor Vasalacos and Counselor Clifford, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, on the reconvene.
For your worship, item 15.1, Declaration of Scary Interests. Are there any declarations made at standing committee and to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Seeing that, item 15.2 is reading up the bylaw, and there is only one remaining bylaw, which is bylaw 11.7, the confirmatory bylaw, and this bylaw requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Counselor Seven's moving first and second reading, seconded by Counselor Bunty. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, carried. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Henderson, moving third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings, Counselor Vasalacos and Counselor Beatty, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you.